Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Public Housing. At this time, we ask you to silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing. If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At any time throughout the hearing, do not approach the dais. We thank you for your kind cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
This meeting is being called to order. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Councilman Chris Banks, Chair of Public Committee on Public Housing, and I'm glad to be joined by my colleagues. Councilmember Mealy's on Zoom. As Chair of this committee, I know just how important it is for government to make policy that addresses the needs of citizens. NYCHA is responsible for the needs of hundreds of thousands of tenants, and at today's hearing, we are looking at a policy that directly impacts residents' health, safety, and while also showing how NYCHA can be responsive and listen to tenants when making policy. Today, we're examining NYCHA's rules on the micro mobility devices. Everyone in our city has been more than, and more of these bikes and e-scooters are on the streets and in our buildings. These devices can be tremendously helpful for New Yorkers as expanding job opportunities or providing an easy and quicker way to commute. Studies have long shown the impact of shorter commutes on upward social mobility and overall well-being, so it is no surprise that e-bikes and e-scooters become so popular so quickly. Unfortunately, we have also consequently witnessed far too many tragedies, in fast-moving and dangerous battery fires. The lithium batteries in some of these e-bikes and e-scooters are unsafe, rendered dangerous by factors including improper storage practices, improper manufacturing practices, or both. These batteries can suddenly combust without warning, resulting in especially fast-moving and volatile fires. With such stakes in mind, I am that much more eager to hear about NYCHA's preparations for the newly revised electric mobility policy. I'm aware and glad that this policy was the result of incorporating residents' feedback and concerns over prior vision of the policy. With that being said, I remain curious on the critical aspects of this policy, its outreach, enforcement, and follow-up through. With my colleagues, I am looking forward to hearing from NYCHA's, hearing from NYCHA about these crucial details today. I want to know what is being done for outreach around this new micro mobility policy. I want to know how NYCHA is taking measures to ensure proper enforcement at this, of this policy, and I want to know who is following through and making sure that the new policy is being comprehended and proactively implemented at the NYCHA buildings. Instead of reacting after another tragedy strikes, as I've mentioned before, I appreciate that this new policy came about as the culmination of public outreach and feedback. But with this, how many e-bikes, e-scooters, and other such devices are out there, including at NYCHA developments, the importance of following through to meet the needs of our residents at that much more pronounced? I would like to thank my staff, Michael Lambert, along with the Public Housing Committee staff, Jose Conde, Connaught Mealy, Dan Crop, Nicholas Montalbano, and Christopher, and Charles Kim, and for all the work that was put into this hearing. Now, we will open up and allow the testimony from our NYCHA partners.
So if you all could raise your hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
Yes.
If you all could just identify yourself and your title as you, for the record, that would be great.
Brian Honan, Executive Vice President for Intergovernmental Relations.
Eva Trimble, Chief Operating Officer.
Joseph Terranova, Director of Fire Safety.
Siobhan Watson, Senior Director of Sustainability.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris Banks, members of the Committee of Public Housing, NYCHA residents, community advocates, and members of the public. Good afternoon. I am Eva Trimble, NYCHA's Chief Operating Officer. I am pleased to be joined today by Brian Honan, Executive Vice President of Intergovernmental Affairs, Joe Terranova, Director of Fire Safety, and Siobhan Watson, Senior Director of Sustainability. I'd like to note that Mr. Terranova is NYCHA's first-ever Director of Fire Safety. He was brought on to oversee our fire safety team, which is part of a recent organizational and operational enhancements, is now a standalone unit dedicated to improving fire safety standards at the authority's developments. NYCHA's transformation is guided by our mandate to strengthen the authority and improve residents' quality of life. At the heart of these efforts are resident engagement and economic opportunities, as well as resident health and safety. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss today an important demonstration of this work in action, NYCHA's implementation of an electric micro mobility policy that was shaped extensively by input from our stakeholders, including residents, advocates, other members of the public, and the City Council. Residents' quality of life is central to everything we do. To that end, we endeavor to craft an electric micro mobility policy that balances the safety of the NYCHA community with the economic needs of residents who rely on these devices for work and for transportation, especially in the transit deserts around many of our city's public housing developments. NYCHA's mission is to foster opportunity for residents, and we realize that e-micro mobility is a vital tool for economic advancement. Due to fire safety concerns, in 2022, NYCHA sought public comment and engagement on a potential ban of e-micro mobility devices, including e-bikes, at our developments. We listened closely to the feedback we received and, based on this input, revised the proposed policy, evolving it from a total ban to a restriction. The amended version was presented for public comment in November 2023. In response to the feedback received from our stakeholders during the second comment period, NYCHA adopted guidelines addressing the use of electric micro mobility devices in NYCHA buildings and apartments, which are intended to reduce fire risks and better educate the community on good practices, while ensuring that residents can safely store and charge these devices. The policy went into effect March 1st, 2024. It allows residents to keep or charge e-bikes and e-scooters that are legal to operate in New York City bike lanes in their apartments. Those devices that cannot be operated legally in a New York City bike lane or that require DMV registration or a driver's license to operate are prohibited in NYCHA buildings. The policy also includes the following safety guidelines. Only one e-bike, e-scooter, or battery may be charged at a time in a NYCHA apartment. An adult must be present and awake in the apartment during charging. Extension cords cannot be used for charging, and charging can't take place near radiators or other heat sources or apartment doors or other exits. Lithium-ion batteries that have been banned by New York City law are prohibited, and charging and storage are not allowed in building common areas. In addition to posting this new policy on our website, NYCHA also notified residents through an email blast, development postings, the NYCHA Journal, rent inserts, and among other outreach. Promoting sustainability is also a critical element of NYCHA's transformation, and we recognize that electric micro mobility helps advance NYCHA and the city's sustainability agenda. Since 2022, NYCHA has participated in the Adams Administration's Inter-Agency Electric Micro Mobility Task Force, which brings together a variety of city agencies to develop and apply the city's micro mobility action plan. The task force promotes safe electric micro mobility while addressing the city's fire and safe, and street safety priorities by collaboratively developing and deploying a range of comprehensive resources. NYCHA also continues to work closely with partners such as the New York City Fire Department and New York City Department of Transportation on best practices and the best way forward in terms of fire safety and electric micro mobility. In March 2023, Mayor Adams announced the Change to Charge Safe/Ride Safe Electric Micro Mobility Action Plan, which employs a multifaceted approach to reduce fires and promote safe usage of micro mobility devices. Included in the plan was a pilot between NYCHA and ConEd to install outdoor charging and storage areas for micro mobility devices at four developments, Queensbridge North and Queensbridge South in Queens, De Hostos in Manhattan, and Van Dyke One in Brooklyn. We expect the contract will be executed this summer, and installation is anticipated to begin in early 2025. NYCHA was also awarded a $25 million grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation to expand micro mobility charging and storage facilities to 53 more campuses. We are currently working with our city partners to implement this raised grant and look forward to providing an update on this initiative in the coming months. Residents' health, safety, and well-being guide every aspect of our work. We believe we have struck the right balance for promoting safety while fostering economic empowerment, transportation alternatives, and quality of life through our guidelines on the use of e-micro mobility devices. We are also creating a safe charging environment for the community by investing in charging stations at our developments. As always, we appreciate your input, and we look forward to our continued collaboration and service to NYCHA residents. Thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your statement. We will begin by first asking the first question. How would you describe NYCHA's current approach to enforcing the micro mobility policy? And is it primary reactive or is it primary proactive in conducting inspections at the apartments?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. It's definitely a combination of proactive and reactive tactics. It is, you know, at its core, a see something, say something policy. We've instructed all property management staff on the legal devices that are allowed and that they could expect to see in apartments and those that they should not see in apartments. We've instructed particularly maintenance workers who are going into apartments to do work, that if they see the device that's not appropriate, or if they see anything that violates the policy, multiple devices charging at once, devices charging near the radiator or by the door, on an extension cord, that they need to report that directly to the property manager in order for us to call in the resident for a conference.
And when it comes to training, hasn't the, what training has NYCHA property management staff received about the, how to determine if the e-bikes or the e-bike batteries, when it comes to complaints or new rules?
So we've shared pictures of the allowable devices and descriptions of what's permitted in the apartments versus what's not permitted with all property management staff. In addition, I've issued a guidance on the enforcement, and that guidance was reviewed at what we call our muster meetings in the morning, where the staff gather to get their assignments for the day. The assistant super or superintendent have reviewed all of that with the maintenance and other staff.
Has any other staff at NYCHA been trained about the new rule outside of management?
We started with the property management staff, since that's the primary staff, caretakers and maintenance workers. However, we, we plan to share the guidance with other skilled trades and other staff that will be entering apartments.
Okay, excellent. What, what unit in NYCHA has a responsibility for enforcing this new rule?
Our property management department is charged with enforcing this rule through the property management offices. So if a device or an infraction is seen, the worker will report it to the property management, and property management will send a letter to the resident asking for a conference, calling them down to the management office to discuss the infraction, and the manager will work with the resident to, you know, cure the issue. We, of course, want to maintain everybody in a safe and healthy standard, so we want to explain what they, what we saw and ask them to, to correct the condition.
Thank you. Before I proceed to my next question, we've been joined by Councilmember Salamanca. What public education campaign or outreach has been done by NYCHA tenants, to NYCHA tenants about the new policy and about the e-bike and e-bike battery safety in, in general?
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll start, and then I'll hand it off to my colleague, Joe. So we have briefed the C-Cop. We've been to many tenant association meetings, were invited. There has been articles in the NYCHA Journal. There were notices in rent inserts, and also as part of the work that fire safety does, they've also done a lot of outreach as well. So, Joe, maybe I could pass that over to you as well.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you for that question, Councilmember. Last October, Fire Safety held the first-ever annual Fire Safety Symposium down at the New York City Fire Museum. This was a education program for the resident association leadership. It was in partnership not only with NYCHA Fire Safety, but with the FDNY, multiple divisions of that, New York City Fire Museum, and a few private partners. We had a two-and-a-half-hour lesson on fire safety, and we included a very long section in regards to lithium-ion battery safety that was headed up by Chief Dan Flynn and Supervising Fire Marshal John Orlando. Now, moving forward, we have six of these Fire Safety Symposiums planned this year. First one is in the Bronx on July 15th. Similar events, we're trying to bring it more to local level. We are stressing fire safety, and of course, there's a module including lithium-ion battery safety and basically all of the knowledge that we've gained over the past year. We'll be introducing the policy, or should I say reinforcing the policy at that point. We'll be discussing some of the previous events citywide to include some of the events that happened at NYCHA. Obviously, there's some expert-level folks from the Fire Department Bureau of Fire Investigation and from the FDNY Education Unit, and they're going to be transmitting the same message. We're trying to have a unified message citywide to all of our resident association leaders.
I know particularly at a, I had a conversation with a TA president from Pink Houses, and they were quite dismayed at the fact that they didn't get any information, they weren't included earlier on in the development of this policy, and that was something that they had stressed to me, that they needed, they want involvement when these policies are being created. So hopefully, you can have that conversation again, and hopefully can get to the TA at the Pink Houses, so they can know what's going on, and, I mean, it's kind of after the fact, because the policy's already been released, and I think it's important that we constantly grapple with this, with NYCHA, with making sure that there's resident engagement on policies that's going to affect their lives. You know, these folks live there, you don't. So we want to make sure again, and I want to reiterate that, that, you know, going forth, that we, we constantly engage in the TAs on this so that they can be engaged in this process. And with that being said, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Councilman Salamanca, who has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. I am actually happy that we're having this hearing on micro mobility. It's a concern that I have when I speak to my tenants, my constituents. I have their largest NYCHA portfolio in the city of New York, and they, they fear, there are many concerns, safety, their intercal's not working, right, leaky roofs, and, hey, does my neighbor have a e-bike which he may be charging, which I'm scared that will create a fire in my, on my floor? I see here that NYCHA put out a, a policy to, in which they, they must conform to. Now, what enforcement mechanism is there to ensure that tenants are actually complying with your policy?
Thank you, Councilmember. So all of our main, primary property management staff, maintenance workers and caretakers, have been trained on the policy, so they're on the lookout for devices that are not allowable in apartments, particularly for maintenance workers who are going into apartments to make repairs. If they see a device that's not allowable, or again, if they see multiple batteries charging at once, not in the right location, attached to an extension cord, any of those factors, they report it directly to the property manager, who will then call the, the resident in for a conference in order to discuss the situation.
What, what if there's no compliance from the tenant? What, how far is NYCHA going to go to ensure compliance?
This is in our House rules now, and, and will also be a violation of the lease if they fail to comply. So worst-case scenario, NYCHA will proceed with an administrative termination. However, you know, our goal is to keep people housed and to keep our residents safe in the process, so, you know, we hope it would never come to that, that we could bring about compliance with the resident through education. However, we would go to administrative termination. We have the ability to do that because it is a violation of our lease, and then if we do find for administrative termination, we could also proceed with a legal eviction case.
Are you posting these policies visible in the hallways and in the elevators? But, you know, not too wordy, something that can catch their attention.
Yes, the, the policy when it was, when it was released was, was posted, it was also shared in rent inserts. In addition, as, as part of the House rules, the resident, all residents have to affirm that they've read the House rules as part of their annual recertification. So every year, when they go back to renew and recertify, they have to review the House rules and certify that they've read it, and so it's all part of the House rules now as well.
And this is bilingual, correct? You have this available in different languages? Mr. Chair, do I have two more questions?
No, you may. Do you have any?
Thank you. Now, does NYCHA require their tenants to register their e-bikes with NYCHA?
No, we do not require registration of the e-bikes.
Well, I would highly recommend you require them, so you can keep track of who actually has an e-bike or not. It's just a recommendation. And then finally, I see here that you got a grant, $25 million grant from the Department of Transportation to expand your, your charging stations. I, maybe a couple of months ago, we got, there was someone that came that had, there was, as a startup business on, on e-bikes, kind of, you could rent them, and his, in his business, he was very proud of the fact that he can take the batteries and, for charging, and put them into this container where, should there were a fire, where one of those batteries were to catch fire, they would get extinguished. I see throughout my district that Amazon has these kind of containers where you could pick up your packages in front of the buildings. Would you not consider having something similar to that in front of the NYCHA developments so that individuals who have to charge their batteries, they can charge them in a safe space?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. So NYCHA has been looking at how we can respond to the need for new types of infrastructure now that e-micro mobility devices have become so prevalent. So we've been working to do that in a couple of different ways. Number one, we've been working with ConEd on installing four pilot charging and storage stations at four developments, Queensbridge North and South, De Hostos, and Van Dyke. Number two, we have secured a $25 million grant from the federal government to expand micro mobility charging and storage access to 53 more developments, and we are working to finalize that grant award. In terms of the specific types of infrastructure that we would install, I think, you know, we are open to suggestions of what is the most convenient way to serve residents' need to charge safely. So our ConEd program actually is within their demonstration program. It's specifically geared to kind of find out as much as we can about how useful the infrastructure is, what are the barriers to use, and how we can best serve residents. In terms of the, the specific technologies you mentioned, I believe one of them is a battery swapping technology, and I, and we'll have to get back to you with more details because this is a DOT program, but there is a battery swapping program that is expanding throughout the city. And then the other one, the Amazon, you said the Amazon Locker-type system?
Yes.
There are a number of different proposals out there about how we might combine micro mobility charging with other necessary infrastructure, so we are keeping a close eye on what the options are and how best to serve residents.
Thank you. I just ask that as you're moving forward and you, in terms of locations or NYCHA developments, please, don't forget the South Bronx, you know, please. And I highly recommend that you look into ensuring that, that these e-bikes are registered through NYCHA. Look, I'm a big proponent, you know, this is an industry, they, this is, this is how they make their living. I want to support it, but I want to ensure, like we all do, safety for our tenants and our constituents first. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Salamanca. We're going to move on. Does this policy, or how does this policy apply to the RAD packs?
So for the developments moving forward that will be closing, they will, they will be under the policy, the NYCHA policy. For the developments that closed before the policy went into effect, each, each development does have their own individual policy. However, they've all been informed of, of our policy and encouraged to come up with something similar.
Okay, that, that, that makes sense, okay. So you're going to give them some leeway, those particular RADs that were converted prior to the policy?
That's right. But moving forward, all the new ones will be under the NYCHA policy.
The, how does NYCHA keep track of the micro, micro mobility devices in the NYCHA campuses?
Thank you, Councilmember. We're not currently tracking comprehensively the devices that we find. We, it is, it is something that we record within an individual residence file, but we don't have the ability right now to track overall how many e-bikes or other micro mobility devices we're seeing across the campus.
So the residents are not required to notify NYCHA?
No, as, as we explained to Councilmember Salamanca, we're not requiring registration at this time, so we have no single source for how many may exist.
Well, then, then I'm trying, then I'm trying to understand the enforcement response. How does, how does that work? Can you?
Again, it's, if we see something, we follow up on it. So if a maintenance worker is in an apartment and sees a device that's not permitted, or again, a charging infraction, then we're able to follow up with the resident.
So how does, well, I guess maybe you can create a scenario for me where a complaint comes in, whether it's from management or if it comes from a tenant. I mean, how, how is that complaint received? Is there, you know, is an investigation done? I mean, I mean, you know, these are kind of uncharted, and also too, if it's an immediate situation with immediate danger, is, is law enforcement called? Fire department called? I mean, who, you know, that's something. So I'm trying to understand if you can expound a little more on how the enforcement will look.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember, for that question. Of course, I want to, I want to be clear for any residents that are, that are listening right now, that if they ever feel unsafe or see, if they feel like they're witnessing an unsafe situation, to absolutely call the appropriate authorities, call 911, call the fire department if they, if they think they, they're, you know, in a dangerous situation or seeing a dangerous situation, that should absolutely be their first stop. Complaints can come in in various ways to us. They can come in from neighbors through the property management office. We have an anonymous tip line that residents could call. It could, again, it can be from our own staff witnessing, maybe someone taking a, a device in and out of the building. So there's many ways that we can get the information. What happens next is, again, that the property manager will call the resident in for a conference to discuss the situation with them and hopefully explain the safety hazards, make sure they understand the violations of the lease that could exist, and bring about compliance. Our goal is, is to, through education, to bring about compliance with the policy.
Are the property managers empowered to seize a bike or a battery?
No, they're, we cannot, you know, touch private property in that way. If, again, if our property manager sees something that they feel is severely unsafe, we could also call the fire department, but our goal is to work with the resident to bring about compliance.
And is there like a three-strike, three-strikes-and-you're-out approach to this, or basically on a first violation, a tenant can be dragged into court for termination?
So yes, if, we have about three conferences before we proceed with administrative termination, and then once, if we, if we are successful with the administrative termination process, then we can, we can further proceed to, through, a legal action through housing court.
Does NYCHA know or have any estimation of how many NYCHA residents have micro mobility devices?
We do not.
Okay. Before I move on to the next question, I just want to recognize Councilmember Bhatra. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Bhatra has joined us, do apologize. Do you have any questions, Councilwoman Bhatra? How quickly does NYCHA respond to a complaint in regards to a tenant or who may be, or a tenant who may be violating this particular policy?
I don't have an exact timeframe for this just yet, but if, you know, upon receiving the, the information, the property manager will call the resident down for a conference, so it works, you know, as far as, you know, their convenience of meeting together with the property manager. We try to meet with the resident in person to explain the situation. We try to meet with the resident in person to explain the situation.
How is this, uh, complaint registered with NITRA?
It depends on the way the complaint comes in. Again, the residents can call the CCC and put in a, a complaint through the CCC and then it would be tracked there. Um, we do have an anonymous tip line that residents can call and place, and, you know, submit information on their neighbors or something they're seeing in a development. Or a resident can just call the property management office and speak to a housing assistant or the property manager themselves and, and issue the complaint.
Do we have any active complaints that have been registered by tenants or, uh, management currently? Cause I mean, the, I mean, the, uh, policy has been out since March.
I'd have to check, I don't have that data with us today.
Okay. Um, and, uh, we, we've established that PD or the fire department can be called by management?
If they see something that they think is a severe situation, a severe hazard, yes, of course. We, we would call the fire department or the NYPD.
And we're, we're empowering tenants also to call the, uh, to, to reach out to management or to reach out to, uh, law enforcement?
Whichever they feel is appropriate based on what they're seeing. If, you know, if, yeah, I would say an extreme situation that would trigger a nine-one-one call is if we do see a resident who's maybe operating, you know, a bike or battery shop out of their, out of their apartment.
Right.
That is, you know, not, uh, we ban, uh, businesses like that in our apartments, so that would not be, uh, allowable use. And so if they see someone that has an extreme number in their apartment that they know that that activity is going on, they should feel free to call the police department.
Is the property manager or staff, are they allowed to do inspections?
We do, we do our required annual inspections of our apartments. In 2024, we're required by HUD to inspect every single apartment. So again, as part of the inspections, staff are trained to look for these, for these situations as well.
Uh, so, since the policy has been initiated since March, has there been any, uh, inspections authorized, um, by NITRA?
Yes, we've been doing inspections, um, as, as part of our regular everyday business.
Particularly for this particular?
We have, we have not issued any specific micro mobility device inspections. And I don't have the data right now, I'm sorry, of any devices that were found during an inspection.
Has there been any emergency inspections, um, undertaken since the new policy was put in, put in place?
No, not yet.
Okay, has NITRA tracked the number of, uh, residents who have violated the micro policy, um, uh, since the implementation? Has there been any violations?
Not that I'm aware of, but we can double check the data and get back to you.
Okay. How closely are you monitoring this? Um, the violations that are coming in? Cause I mean, obviously this is new territory, um, or uncharted waters in a sense. Um, when you have, uh, you know, when, when, you know, with this particular policy, what, what, how are you, how closely are you monitoring this?
Right now, property managers, again, will set, there's multiple steps in the process. Um, it's a progressive tenancy process. So, you know, property managers may be calling in a resident for that first conference and it may get resolved. They may have to call back for a second. So I don't have the data on how many conferences are happening specific to micro mobility. Uh, we're not tracking it at that level and we have not had to bring a termination case yet for micro mobility.
All right, can you, can you walk us through, uh, the steps of what would happen to a tenant if they're in violation of the micro mobility policy?
Sure, we would, again, proceed with the initial conference. And if the condition is not cured, we would, we would have a second conference, um, and then a third, and then we would proceed to administrative termination. If we're successful in administrative termination, then we would proceed to housing court and seek an eviction of the resident for failure to comply with their lease.
Okay. Um, so I guess, uh, would NITRA consider giving a tenant probation? I guess the, the second and the third would be considered a probation and then, or would that just be?
It's just a progressive process of, of tenancy. I think it's also important to remember that even if we go back to the apartment and look, um, these devices are mobile, so there may be an infraction when you're there one time and not there another time.
Right.
It's very, it is a, it is an enforcement challenge for us that we're, you know, the, the policy is still new. We're looking to find the right balance, um, between residents' ability to have these devices and the enforcement of them.
Does NITRA offer any resources to educate the residents about safe charging practices for the, uh, micro mobility devices? And how is, how is this information distributed?
I will hand it over to Mr. Terranova to talk more about the fire safety education we've been doing in general.
Thank you, Councilmember, I'm, I apologize, could you repeat the question?
Uh, does NITRA offer any resources to educate residents about the safe charging practices for the micro mobility devices? And, um, how is this information distributed?
Oh, that's a very good question, thank you. Um, so first off, I want to say a couple of things. The best fire to have is the one that doesn't get started in the first place. So fire prevention, uh, especially with lithium ion battery powered devices is the key to our success in this program. I would also like to commend City Council for passing the first in the nation law in regards to the sale of only third-party certified devices. Um, it's nice to be part of that program with that. Now, having said that, uh, there is a fairly, uh, extensive, um, internal and external public education program that we have there. Starting with a number of fire safety symposiums that we're holding for our resident association leaders, one per borough. And then we're gonna final, uh, have a final one in October to wrap up the rest of the city that we missed, uh, down at the Fire Museum, uh, for the City of New York. Uh, we have Family Day coordination with the FDNY Education Unit. Uh, they come out, they help provide that public education part, uh, and they have direct interaction with the residents during the Family Day events. Uh, we have Fire Safety Week, actually, we're now making it Fire Safety Month, the month of October, uh, with the anniversary of the Triangle Shirt Waste Factory Fire, um, there's Fire Safety Week. We promote that for an entire month. Each week, we have a different topic that we stress, both in mailings, emails on our website and, uh, that message that goes out to all the residents and staff. Um, we have some internal staff training and credentialing that goes along with this. This way they can repeat the message and we're trying to have a uniform message along with our partners. Um, we do partner and collaborate and coordinate with the FDNY Bureau of Fire Investigators, who are taking the lead on, uh, the, the lithium ion battery safety issue citywide. Uh, we obviously have the Bureau of Fire Prevention involved in this. Uh, we're partnership, we have a fairly strong partnership with the FDNY Education Bureau under their FDNY Smart Program. Uh, we direct all of our residents to their webpage and we try to have a, uh, a common safety message associated with that. And those messages are available in multiple languages, uh, from that. We also have partnership with the Fire Museum of the City of New York, all right? And we, um, uh, we allow, uh, we have entry into the Fire Museum. We do for NITRA residents, uh, we have our symposiums there and we try to promote the same message. So yes, we have a fairly extensive messaging program, both online, uh, and in person for fire safety.
All right, thank you. Uh, we're gonna now, uh, before I proceed, I'm gonna allow, uh, Councilmember Bhatia to move forward with his questions.
Thank you, Chair. This policy went into effect on March first across the NITRA portfolio. The policy that only one e-mobility battery may be charged at a time. The adult must be present and awake. Extension cords can't be used, they can't charge near radators. They must be certified batteries that are allowed by law and the charging can't happen in common areas. I, I missed your answer before. Have there been any violations of the policy since March first in the NITRA portfolio?
Thank you, Councilmember. So I don't have that exact data with me today, partially because, um, you know, we don't really use the term violation. However, it's possible that a property manager has had that initial conference with a resident, but we're not tracking that, uh, specifically just yet. So I, I can't say for certain whether those conferences have or have not had, happened.
The, the reason I ask is that we have quite a few tenants who are really concerned for their safety. And I don't necessarily, I don't blame them because of the fires and the fatalities that have happened. And we do want to make sure that this policy is enforced. There's no shortage of policies that NITRA has that aren't very well enforced. And I'm aware of the challenges of that with the portfolio that you have and, and the, this, the scale of it. But I look forward to working with my colleague Chair Banks and all of you to ensure that this policy is enforced and that people are kept safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to Councilmember Bhatia. Um, I'll move forward with my questions. Uh, how often does NITRA update residents when it comes to the various housing policies? Um, and I think I asked that question already. What measures are in place to aid with, uh, the community when it comes to the continuality in the outreach around the enforcement, uh, with this policy um, to residents, building management and other points of communication? The outreach, back to the outreach, what is, what, yeah, when there's changes in the policy, so?
Sure, um, thank you, Councilmember. Um, I think a lot of the ways that we had mentioned, uh, earlier, you know, we promoted on our website, through our journal, um, through the, um, the events that, uh, Joe described before on fire safety. Um, we also put out this policy out for public comment as well. And so we wanted to make sure that, um, NITRA residents, advocates, um, and then just mi- members of the public, you know, had the opportunity to comment in the, on the policy before it went out and, um, and, and tell us, you know, if we're heading in the right direction. And, uh, so, um, this wasn't something that we just, you know, told folks and then, um, you know, it was, it was out for quite some time before, uh, for at least thirty days before we, uh, we, we put it into effect.
Okay. Uh, what, what is the current sta- status of the four charging stations? Um, planned in partnership with, uh, ConEdis and at, um, Queensbridge North and Queensbridge South. And I think, uh, the Hostos and Van Dyke Houses.
Sure, thank you for that question. Uh, so we have been working with ConEd to secure a vendor to install and maintain those stations. There was an RFP put out that, um, received a response. We've actually had, uh, the, the TA presidents from those four developments were involved in the selection process for the RFP. Uh, and we expect that the, the vendor will be announced later this summer. Um, after that point, uh, ConEd has to go to the Public Service Commission for approval since it is a, a program that requires their approval. Um, and we expect that installation will begin if that approval is secured in early 2025.
All right, uh, will these stations, will they be open to the general public? Or is it just strictly for NITRA residents?
Uh, these four pilot sites will be for NITRA residents.
Um, and how much does it cost to create, uh, a designated charging station?
So I don't have an exact number for you on the price. Um, our goal with installing these stations is to serve residents with this newly needed infrastructure without, uh, impacting NITRA's already stretched budget. So we are relying on partnerships and grants for these, uh, installations. This one is funded through ConEd and I don't have the exact budget number.
Will there be a fee?
Yes, there will be a fee for them. We don't know exactly what the fee will be for, for usage, um, but it will be set in a way that is, uh, designed to encourage usage and, and not have it be a barrier.
So there'll be a fee for charging and storage?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Um, what is the, uh, current stated status of the fifty-three, uh, charging stations funded by the, uh, federal DOT grant?
Sure, so that grant was announced in June of 2023. The award of the grant, however, has not yet been finalized. So we are working closely with our fellow city partners on, uh, finalizing the grant award and, um, uh, developing plans for the implementation of that.
Is the, uh, is there an environmental review process, is the, complete? Has that been completed?
Uh, the, well, environmental review is ongoing for them.
Okay, and, and what is the bidding or the construction? Has that begun for this, this, the stations?
Construction procurement, no, that has not begun yet.
Okay. Um, the, has there been any, uh, determination about where these charging stations will be built?
Um, about where within the development they will be built?
Yeah, like would they be in the parking lot, will they be, yeah.
Uh, that is part of what we are still determining along with our city partners.
Well, well, the feedback from the residents, um, and, and the design and the placement, uh, is that also, uh, something that will, will be, uh, will be, uh, taken into consideration? Or will there be, uh, in, in making these determinations?
Yes, absolutely. So as I mentioned, you know, we did have, uh, resident leader participation in the, uh, vendor selection process for the ConEd pilot. Uh, resident engagement in the process for installing the, the future stations through the RAISE grant is also very important to us. Um, we did start reaching out to resident leaders at the fifty-three developments that will be served, uh, back in July of 2023 and kind of got an initial read on, um, feelings about the program and the, the stations and did some further follow-up with resident leaders that were hesitant or had more questions about the, the stations. And we'll continue that kind of engagement, uh, as we get down to those details of exactly where the, where the stations will be located.
So this, uh, level of, um, engagement, uh, that's being done with the, uh, with the, the pilot, this is the model that's gonna be followed, uh, by the, for the other, uh, fifty or so sites? Or forty, forty-seven sites?
Yeah, I mean, we are, um, working to standardize resident engagement across all of our capital projects in the Asset and Capital Management Division and making sure that we have touchpoints throughout the kind of scoping, design and construction process for our capital projects and want, definitely want to follow that model as we implement the RAISE grant.
Will there be, um, any, uh, particularly any town hall meetings of some, of sort? Uh, when it comes to, uh, educating, uh, the, the tenants or the residents on, on this particular policy?
We have not planned the exact form of engagement as we move forward with the grant implementation, but we certainly want to make sure that people understand what they are, how to use them and, and have opportunities to give input through the design process.
Will there be signage, uh, placed throughout the developments? Um, and has currently, is there, are there signage being placed? Um, letting them know that this policy is in place? Um, and, uh, you know, is there, or is there any direct consultation going on? Uh, so residents are aware because obviously, uh, we, we know that, uh, you know, there's, there's frustration with NITRA, with, uh, with a lot of residents saying that they're not getting information. Um, and this, you know, not having this information can, can definitely be, uh, definitely harmful to the tenants, um, especially those who have these particular devices. And, um, as I said, it's, 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 it's part of, you have a lot of tenants who are using this to, to make, you know, put food on their table. Um, so, uh, is there, you know, uh, has NITRA been aggressive in making sure that the tenants understand the importance of this particular policy and, and understanding it? So they don't, you know, they're not in violation of their lease?
Uh, I'll defer the policy question. Um, that's a question about the overall policy, not the stations, right?
Councilmember, yeah, yeah, I think, you know, on this, on this, we did spend a lot of time, um, you know. Number one, um, it was a concern that we heard from residents about, um, about the safety, uh, issue. We had an initial proposal, um, that, um, banned, you know, uh, the devices altogether. Um, and we heard not only from this, uh, committee, but we heard from residents and we heard from many advocates too, that that was going a step too far. Uh, it's something that we heard very loudly, it's something we heard very clearly. We worked very closely with this committee, um, in order to, um, shape a policy that we thought that listened to residents' concerns, um, that was a, um, a reasonable compromise, um, that had safety in mind, but also, um, you know, kept in mind that people want to use these, um, devices for many different reasons. Some of them for economic reasons, some of them, you know, for good transportation, some just for fun. They don't have to tell us why they use them, you know, but, you know, they, then they wanted to make sure that, uh, they have the ability to do so. So I think this was something where we really did learn a lot, we really did listen to a lot of the people and we did, really did, and we certainly heard from a lot of people. You know, it is amazing to me how strong the opinions are of people on this issue, one way or the other. And, and, uh, but, but this was, this was something that we took a, we took a long time, um, And, but, but this was, this was something that we took, we took a long time, and we did make sure that the word was out there. And we heard it in our last year's annual plan meeting, I'm sure in the annual plan meeting that's coming up in July 25th, July 30th, excuse me, we'll be hearing, you know, from residents, too, again, as well about this, though. So it's out there.
Thank you. When it comes to registration, again, what is, how's that going to look? Where are we at with exploring the possibility? I think it's a good idea, and I'm hoping that we can, you know, get some, you know, clarity as to how that registration is going to look.
Thank you, council member. It's something that we're willing to explore more of. I can't see anything specific on it yet, as we have to look into it some more.
Yeah. And it makes sense, perfect sense to, in a sense of having a registration, because it allows for tracking for these particular devices. And I know the policy is just, is just put in place as of March, but it would be good if we get some clarity as to, again, determine how many of these devices are on NITRA developments. And I think it will help with educating the residents as to, you know, doing this in a proper, more safe way, and, you know, and following the compliance with the policy. We, at this point, I guess we don't have any more questions for you. I appreciate you for coming and your statement and your testimony, and thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, council member.
Thank you.